...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have two items on our work session for today. One is an update on Hampton Bay's downtown planning. And our town planner is here with a couple of people online, I think, from Historical Concepts. And Janice, come on up.
And just before you get started, I'm going to take the roll call.
Would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Present.
Councilman Iasili.
Present.
Councilman Hell.
Present.
Councilman Skivon.
And five of us are present.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Present. It's going back.
I know. You always had fun with that.
You're a good company.
Yes. Morning, Janice.
Good morning.
Good morning, Janice.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me this morning. So we are here, I'm here, for an update on the Hampton Bay's planning efforts. And Historical Concepts is on Zoom. They're here to give you an update because, well, we haven't had a chance to talk to the new members of the board about this process. In addition, the previous board voted to extend Historical Concepts' contract and asked them to do a few things, mainly to meet with some business owners and stakeholders downtown, Chamber, to meet with the CAC and to meet with the Civic to get feedback on that whole reboot idea, what it could be. There's not any commitment to this, but the idea was to have them lay something out, at least we had a visual to work from. And so with that, I have Elizabeth and Paul on Zoom. Do you guys, we don't hear you, though. Are you unmuted? Can you hear us?
Hi.
Oh, yes.
I can hear you.
And they're going to give you a little recap and then what they've done so far. And last night, we had the first of the three meetings, and that was with the Chamber and property owners. So they're going to give you a little summary of how that went.
Thank you, Janice.
Hi, Elizabeth and Paul. We can hear you.
They can't hear us.
We cannot hear you guys.
Yeah. We can.
Looks like you're muted.
Oh, no. Hello? Check, check one.
We can do it.
We cannot hear you.
Maybe turn your volume up?
Charles, can you just chat, put on the chat to them that they can speak, because we can hear them?
We hear you. You can't hear us.
Our phone is muted.
Our mute is off in here.
You are muted.
Oh, yeah, we were muted.
We were muted. Can you hear us now?
Yes?
There we go.
Okay. We can hear you.
Now we hear you.
Great.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just said you were going to give them an update, a little sort of what happened to date, how you're here, what you've done so far, a meeting with the Chamber and the business owners.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Since you've got three new board members, can they introduce themselves?
Absolutely. They're going to give you an overview of what they're doing. Yes.
History of their profession.
It's really, really quiet, so we barely hear you.
Need to speak into the mic.
Could you give us a background, because you've got three new board members, where you're from, your name, your company, and your mission, please?
Yeah, great. We, Ryan, Elizabeth, Dylan, Paul Knight. We work with a company called Historical Concepts. We are architects and planners. We do traditional-based, precedent-based design. We are based out of Atlanta, Georgia, but I run our New York City office. We've had an office here in New York City for about 10 years. We've been doing work in the Hamptons for a little over 15 years now. We do primarily residential design in the Hamptons. But we also do work for private developers and investors yourselves, planning vision work as well as architecture. Paul is a certified planner that we have on staff. And so we do have a little presentation where we have a little bit of background of our involvement with the town here. I don't know if you guys want to launch into that?
Sure.
See the screen here?
Yes.
Great. So we first started working with the town back in 2016. So this was just an overview of the schedule. Started working with the whole of generating a pattern book. We did a number of public meetings, stakeholder meetings. So we've been working with the town for about seven and a half years now on Hampton Bay. We started out that process by doing what we call a precedent tour, looking at eastern end of Long Island, some towns that were contemporaries of Hampton Bay, to look at how they had developed. You know, we are architects. We like visuals. So we went to all these towns, we measured things. This is kind of our cheat sheet, as you would, looking at the block size, the frequency of buildings. You can see the block is the building, the figure ground diagram here. So do some context research. And then we launched into the public outreach process. We had a series of community stakeholder meetings. We had a public meeting here where we did a small session breakout, looking at visual preferences, showing a lot of images, asking the community members what they wanted the future of Hampton Bay to look like. We did an online survey where we got a little over 1,200 responses that was comparable to that in-person workshop, showing a lot of photos, doing what we call a visual preference survey. And the overwhelming takeaway was that the community wanted a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use downtown area that was pedestrian oriented. So that is what we took as our goal of what future development should enable, should look like. At that point, we had developed a pattern book, worked with the town. Recently, about a year ago, we re-engaged and we brushed up all of this data gathering that we had done previously of what the community wanted, the previous town boards, and did a listening tour to kind of check back in with the community to see if this still held true, and overwhelmingly it did. But the same findings were confirmed. So then we said, all right, we've heard what the community wants the future of Hampton Bay to look like. Let's look at what the current zoning allows along the main quarter there in Hampton Bay. And so this is a study of essentially what the buy rights zoning allows. The darker gray color you see is the building surrounded by a parking lot, essentially. So really, what is allowed under current zoning is essentially big box, retail. There are some provisions for senior housing or mixed, but generally the form is similar. Big box, step backs on the street, lots of parking. That is not conducive to what we heard the community wanted. This does not create a walkable, vibrant, mixed-use community that is very much oriented towards the car. It's not a comfortable place for pedestrians to spend time in later. So with this finding, the previous town board asked us to take all of this research and our professional expertise and to create some illustrations of what future development in Hampton Bay might look like if it was developed in a way that is keeping with the community's desires. So we brushed back out our figure ground diagrams here in the context and said, all right, this is not conducive to that vibrant, mixed-use environment. What is, the previous conversations, the community has identified these towns as good examples of what they might want to be similar to, not representative, but similar to, South Hampton, Greenport, Side Harbor, Stato. So we pulled these back out, looking at the block length, how frequent is there an intersection? Hampton Bay is along Montauk Highway there right now. The block is 1,800 feet long. Sorry. About 1,800 feet long. If you look at South Hampton, the block is 300 feet long. Kind of 300 to 500 feet block seem to be the norm in these towns. More frequent intersections, higher frequency of buildings, less space between the buildings. So you get a sense here for some of the differences. And so that was our jumping off ground to diving to the design. So I'll turn it over to Paul to give you an overview of the design process and where we landed.
So we took that same study area that we were looking at here, and we wanted to apply those principles of good design to this area. And so what we started off with doing first is taking an X-ray of the town and doing a SWOT analysis. So we're architects. We look at things visually and we look at things in terms of dimension. And so to us, a number of things immediately kind of jump off the page. So you've got all these, what we call, missing teeth along your Main Street, where there are buildings that are too far separated from each other. And so they don't contribute to the street wall or to the outdoor room of the street, which is what you really need to have this vibrant, walkable Main Street. You've got lots that are way too deep, and you've got buildings that aren't facing onto the park. So your park is kind of just way in the back and it's not really engaged with Main Street. So we did those observations and then asked ourselves, well, what could we do to improve on that? What are some of the opportunities we have? Some of those might be increasing connectivity, reducing block size, putting new streets in here, consolidating some of these parcels so that we can get buildings in the front and parking in the back, and those sorts of things. And so to get started, rather than kind of looking at these odd parcel lines that are really hard to work with, at first, we're dreamers. We just kind of lay some white out over the whole area and ask ourselves, what's the ideal plan? If we could do anything, what would we do? So based on all the principles from all the towns that we looked at, this is kind of a great ideal plan, small block, buildings under the street, small building footprint, creating all the street walls and outdoor rooms for all these great streets connected to the park, et cetera, et cetera. And then after that, we kind of use that plan as an underlay and then overlay the odd parcel lines that we have to work with because we're working in reality. And so then you can kind of see, oh, okay, what if we were able to create some streets through here? And we do a number of iterations for that before we kind of land on a plan that is, that kind of works for all those principles. And this is the plan that we ended up with, that checks all those boxes, create the vibrant, walkable streets, connect the park to Main Street, draw people into the park. And as people are allowed to park in the back of these buildings, the real face of the community is allowed to be this beautiful, clean, vibrant, walkable street.
And the hope is that people will park in that central parking lot, leave their car there, and walk to multiple destinations, interact with their neighbors, to present the businesses among each other.
And the building footprint that we're showing is really just one iteration of what this could turn into. We're not necessarily saying this is the exact building footprint that should go there. The framework of these new streets and the alleys and consolidating the parking in the back and fronting onto the park, that kind of the thing that should really kind of stick with this area. And then the building can kind of plug and play or push and pull around.
Yeah, the building could evolve over time. We're trying to show how the building should meet the street and the public ground. But the height of those buildings, the use of those buildings, might change over time with the community's change. I do want to point out one thing that you saw in that plan. Generally left the buildings fronting along Montauk Highway untouched. There was a consensus from the community that they really liked our building, that they felt like that was really crucial to the character of Hampton Bay. So we've really focused the new development on the new cross-street here to try to enhance the existing character, but not completely.
And this is what those new streets might look like. We designed these to be traditional in character, to match the character of Hampton Bay, two stories, one story, showing some roof line variety. This is a view from the park. So we're standing in Good Ground Park, looking at the new development, residential development. And then this is an aerial with Montauk Highway in the foreground and Good Ground Park back here in the back. And we have a catch-up model fly-through, little video of the project that I can play for you.
And we'll say, if you're watching this, that really, this exercise has been to generate illustrations of what future development that we believe is being keeping with what the community wants could look like. We've generated the design, these visuals, and so we are now part of the process of sharing this back to the community. We're sharing this here with you, with the town board. We had a meeting last night with our company property owners and their special committee, the CAC, this later this month, to present this game design to them to get feedback. So we're really hoping that we could use these illustrations to build consensus from the community of what they want this to be, so that you, as the town board, have clear marching orders and can determine what the right tool to enable this sort of development would be.
So here we are in Good Ground Park. Again, these buildings are just kind of placeholders, just a straw man of what this could look like, whether we want one story or two stories, whether we want townhouses, or what kind of mixed use do we want facing onto the park. And then this is looking down that western New Street heading back toward Montauk Highway. And you can see all the parking and service and trash and everything is in the backs of these lots because when you walk through a town or experience a town, you experience it through the street. Now, that's the real face of the town. And so in order to capitalize on that, you kind of want to put all the back house stuff in the back.
This is part of this, we have made some assumptions so that you can see what portions of the ground floor might be retail, some might be office, perhaps the second floor is a mix of office and residential. So we put together some program information, functions of the company unit, so that this information could be used by the town to start looking at sewage flows, engineering, finance, to confirm the feasibility and impact of elements. So that, I guess, I'll hand it back over to Janice to really talk about what the next steps for you all, the town board, might be.
It's a little difficult for us to see the numbers that you've got up there. Could you just tell us what, how many residential units, how many commercial units, office, retail, if it's broken down in that way?
Do you hear us?
Sorry, I think we heard that end of that question where you're asking about the number of residential units?
Yeah, and the other, and all the units, what's the breakdown? Because we can't really.
Or if you could zoom in on that.
Or if you could zoom in on that legend?
Sure. So for the building footprint that we illustrated, it's about 145,000 square feet. And we're assuming, on average, two floors per building. And so the total, that's a little less than 300,000 square feet that we've illustrated. And this plan of that, we kind of allocated 55,000 square feet to ground floor retail, which we focus on the intersection, 28,000 square feet to second floor office, and then the remainder to 160 residential units. And then with a little less than 500 parking spaces.
All surface parking in the lot and on street.
And the 160 units that is based on maximum buildout, based on what the individual property owners would like to actually put on these parcels? Is that correct?
It's just using these footprints, the square footage, and taking kind of an average unit size of that 1,290, which would include circulation space. So it's really, we've not designed specific units. It's really looking at the square footage and kind of just basing by that healthy planning factor that we see, that the units themselves probably would be smaller and larger than that. But that was a reasonable average to you, the actual design in line, I suppose, would be determined by individual property owners.
Individual property owners, okay. We're talking about zoning and not a specific project of 160 units. Just, I just want the world to know that, you know? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Elizabeth and Paul. Thank you very much for putting this together for us, number one. I'm very focused on making sure that there is feedback and input on any of the projects that come before the town. When you mentioned the survey that was done, those 1,200 respondents, do you have any demographic info within the respondents? Do you know who they were, the types of folks that you assessed? Or was it just a completely random sample?
We do. This is kind of our click notes version of the presentation.
Sorry for that.
And this was a survey in 2016, correct?
We did a follow-up survey.
Yeah.
More recently.
More in-depth.
Yeah, and we do have additional documents from the earlier round work that we could share. It could be well, sorry, I'm getting a follow-up pulling up, some of the summaries from that.
So we've got 62% were year-round resident.
And so we do, we have the full survey results that we could get to Janice to distribute to you guys. We also had generated a document here back in January of 2017 that has a summary of our context, our previous research, the notes from all of our community meetings and these results. So we'd be happy to certainly have that.
Yeah, I would definitely like to view that in greater depth.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, we have to.
For sure.
And I'm also interested in the site visitations that were taken. We really did our due diligence at that time, I remember. And people from Hampton Bay's, along with you all, went to different communities and, like you said, measured sidewalks. And I just want to underscore that because I think that's important. You know, they looked at other communities and decided what they wanted for Hampton Bay's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one more question. Do you have, roughly speaking, a percentage of what is a part of this plan that will be redevelopment? And what is a percentage of new development? Is there anything that outlines that? Or?
What you see drawn here in the hand rendering? We're seeing that as all new development.
Okay.
So it's not, you can see the other layers of the word, there are individuals building of those parcels.
Right.
For the purpose here, we were kind of aggregating some of those properties that are owned by individuals who've seen, interested in redevelopment.
Okay.
So just showing what it might be, what the future. These might look like if we were using those parcels in particular, but we are not showing redevelopment of all of the properties.
You mentioned, when you were showing one of the first slides that had some red writing on it, that the buildings that front on Montauk Highway, that one, you know, there's gaps in between them. And I didn't, not clear on what you said as to why we're not addressing that. Isn't it possible to address that without doing any negative impact on the historical nature of the structures?
I mean, I think the hope is that, long term, a whole study area, both the north and south side here, could be redeveloped, that there is opportunity to add additional buildings along Montauk Highway, like you spoke of. In an ideal world, I think if we're talking long-term, that is what would be most conducive to a really healthy, vibrant, walkable community. We were really focused, in this exercise, on the phase one of what the first phase of development might look like, the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, that would be more easily executed in more five to 10 years versus beyond that. And so the hope is that if redevelopment of this area could begin first, this could show the community what is possible, hopefully build excitement. And then this could be, this sort of development could be replicated or continue along Montauk Highway, the south side of the highway, as the development of those properties can develop.
Is it that the lots are larger? And can you go back to that slide that you just were on with the writing that showed the gaps? Yeah. So does that have, Janice, I mean, how would that be addressed? You had mentioned something about re, the plot, the plot?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you would just, it's just noted that those areas could be infilled. It comes down to the individual property owners and whether or not they wanted to infill.
Sorry, you're going to sit a lot softer, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, it would come down to allowing for that infill if that's desired, and then.
But it's not currently allowed for?
It is, it is, currently. You can build VB up to the road. That's the idea of VB, definitely. So, but their exercise was sort of focused on new development and just leaving the character of Montauk Highway alone. But their recommendation as planners and architects would be to fill in the missing teeth over time.
How many different property owners are there? A lot.
On the 10 acres?
Yeah, do you guys have that information? We know that one person aggregated several parcels, but there are quite a few left that are individually owned. I think they're having a hard time hearing.
Sorry, we're having a very hard time hearing you.
It might be your mic. They seem to hear them on this side, but it might be that mic?
Oh.
The question was, how many property owners are in the 10 acres? Individual property owners?
Have we explored any incentives to get those areas built in? No. Well, we did. We did a form.
The poll account here, you can see that there are numbers that are owned by a number of Montauk old seats, which are common owner in our understanding. So those could be aggregated.
It was about six that we aggregated.
Six owners, is that what we're talking about?
Including the Hampton Bay's fire district is? That one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to say, I know you were asking about the redevelopment of other parcels. And that, we did draft a pattern book back in 2017 that had general sidelines that could be applied still to individual property owners outside of this outline that's all that's drawn, who wanted to redevelop or improve their properties in keeping with the character. So they also do these sidelines on a smaller scale of their individual properties.
Question that I have, is the pattern book available online?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but that has not been adopted by the board?
It was adopted and annulled. So it would have to be readopted if you want.
So whatever the. So whatever the alleged shortcoming was with the SEACR process, is that something that we can, you know, start and redo so that we can now adopt the standards? Whatever it was, it was a problem?
The pattern book is sort of a standalone, like redevelopment, it's really just an architectural style book so that you stay consistent with, say, window rhythm or roof lines. So that's sort of not reliant on any of the new zoning? That's something you could do.
And that was a result of public input from the people of Hampton Bays, along with the visitations to other communities in conjunction with our plant, with this company?
Right. The issue with some of the pattern book was that some of the stuff that then went into the form-based code, like the block length stuff was in the pattern book. So if you wanted to look at that and remove things that belong in zoning and just keep that as an architectural style guidebook, that's one option. The other thing is like when we get to whatever it is that everyone wants to do, then we can look at our options on how to rezone it. And then, of course, we have to do, you know, SEACR updated for that.
How did the meeting with the chamber go last night?
I think it went very well. Do you want to hear from them or me or?
Whoever.
Most of the folks there were extremely positive. The business owners, the property owners, they all just want to see Hampton Bays progress and not stagnate or deteriorate, which they feel is happening now, that it's not moving forward, that it's going backwards. There was a lot of talk about, we used to have diners and luncheonettes and these things and now we have, we don't have these things anymore, excuse me. And so there was a lot of sort of regret and remorse that they would really like to see more businesses succeed there and more vibrancy and, and all the things that Elizabeth and Paul were talking about. So I think it was a positive bunch, surprise or?
One thing I would like to do, just to get back to the pattern book for one second, is to say that it sounds like filling in the gaps might be prompted by us putting out the pattern book, giving people design guidelines. So maybe we could, at another work session in the near future, review the pattern book and take out anything that would be problematic.
Sure.
And then get that, get that done.
That's good.
If, if, you know, if everybody's inclined to do that.
Architectural styles?
Yeah. It sounds like it's pretty much complete anyway.
Yeah, I, I like the pattern book. And a lot of the folks that I speak to in Hampton Bays also like, you know, when they look at the designs, you know, they get positive feedback.
Because you thought that also that would have helped move things along, like other properties that wanted to be redeveloped. If they'd had that in place, it would have made things easier for planning board and...
Absolutely. The planning board always can use some standards to hold an application up against so that it's not an arbitrary situation. They need to have a, a good basis for decisions. So the pattern book is definitely a welcome thing. And it also helps investment because then there's no guessing. They don't, people who want to invest and co-locate their business here, they don't want to do ten iterations of something to try to get to somewhere that, and they don't have any certainty as to what anyone wants to see. So the pattern book helps us say, we want to see this. And if you're doing, and it doesn't force you into anything. It has at least several styles of buildings. So you, you could do, and they have it here, like there's different names for the, for the style of architecture. And it just says, if you're going to do this style, you know, you don't make a hodgepodge of windows and roof lines, you do it this way. And if you're gonna do that style, you do it that way.
No, that's beautiful. That's a lot of work. And probably, you know, some of the council people have already reviewed it, but we haven't. I'm sure we all like to see it again.
No, I think it's important to revisit it.
Yeah.
So a lot of do's and don'ts there, you know, how to, you know, not put conflicting materials together or different styles that would not make a lot of visual sense. And that was the idea behind the pattern book.
It seems like a lot of people were talking about, there's not enough office space, there's not enough retail, there's not enough ice cream restaurants, you know. I didn't hear anybody say anything about needing more apartments. And one hundred and sixty just seems like such a lot. And I, I don't know, maybe this has already been talked about before, so forgive me for just coming in now on this, but, you know, is that a necessary component? Do we have to have that? I mean, it's nice to have some apartments above the stores, but, you know, do you have to have it? Or is it, can we just put something in where there's shops for people to go to? It sounds like they want a courtyard where they can sit and eat the ice cream. And then they want something to take them from Montauk Highway, Main Street to the park, you know? So is there something we could do to draw people up to the park without, maybe we, you know, you don't have, or, and add the parking? So I think that all looks great. You need the parking because there isn't much and, and the courtyard area.
Well, yeah, I think what you said last night was, especially the movie theater owners say, you can't build these things anymore without a residential component. Remember that was explained?
Yeah, but I just didn't.
Because the, the economics don't really work. The, the rents don't pay for the maintenance, the taxes, the insurance, and all that it takes per square foot to build such a building. They are looking for that revenue. The, you know, whatever density you land on is whatever you find appropriate. And I'm, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't put that number there, but the, the general feeling for downtown is also to have people living and working there. Like that is part of the, the twenty-four-seven appeal of the downtown, is that?
With the existing zoning in place, there is a senior housing component that is as of right that could go in tomorrow.
Yes.
How many units was that?
Paul, do you have that? The senior housing option, the SC forty-four?
One sixty-six.
One sixty-six.
So that's, that's right there. You just hit the number that we're putting over retail. The problem is from what, from, from what I gather from the conversations that I've had is the retail's like the bread and butter. Like that's, that's what they need, that's a, that's a, that's a given. It's also having those people there are more likely to be the ones to go downstairs and use the shops and, you know, not shop on Amazon because right downstairs, there's a place where they can go get what they need to go get. And then also like, you know, the whole nighttime thing of area of having, like if you go into some of these other areas where they have, it's, it's, it's a nighttime event. It's people that live there, they stay there, they're, you know, it's, it's, it's a younger, I want to say it's a younger demographic that lives in downtown areas because they like the walkability and being able to get on the train and go somewhere and not having to get in a car and go somewhere. They can go downstairs and they can have a drink and they can walk back to their apartment.
Eyes on the street.
I get that, I mean, a hundred and sixty sounds like a lot of units, but I think you have to put it in context of, as of right, there can be a hundred and sixty senior units.
And also, as of right today is a hundred and eight under VB, if I recall correctly. So it's less than.
What do you mean by that?
Right now, today's VB zoning, which we did that calculation in the first round, and we calculated about a hundred, I want to say a hundred and eight.
And this is based on maximum buildout as per the owners. And a hundred and sixty, we're not requiring.
So one sixty's only fifty-two.
We're not requiring a hundred and sixty. That would be the individual decisions of the property owners. If they choose to have an ice cream store with an apartment or two above, and they could just have the ice cream store.
With an office.
But what are you talking about?
Right. So it's based on individuals' decisions and the amount they want to invest in Hampton Bays.
They did a theoretical drawing here, a little program, and said, well, based on our drawing that you see this, this was the picture of it, this accounted for one sixty. That doesn't mean that you have to do, anybody has to do one sixty.
But that's not the current zoning.
That's not the current zoning.
So how can we say that as of right, senior housing can go in with a hundred and sixty-eight?
Oh, SC forty-four, yes. As, we have a floating zone called Senior Citizen Forty-four, which is a, a overlay, like a float, it's, they're called floating zones. And they get landed. And, and the characteristic of a senior citizen zone is that to land it downtown is exactly where you want it. So it's.
But you'd have to have a, a zone change to get it.
It has to have.
It's not there already.
It's not P, it's a floating zone. So a board would have to land it, but it would be, you'd be hard pressed to deny such a thing because they, this ticks all the boxes of where it would actually belong. Senior housing should belong in places where seniors can walk and not need to drive.
So it's not there now, but it would be likely approved to go there.
Somebody could come in and request this floating zone to be landed here.
And that's all I'm, I'm pointing out, is there are other things that can be done currently that would result in the same, if not more than what, and it's not even what's being proposed, it's a make-believe kind of number based on square foot.
Exactly. Um, of course, you know, everybody wants to know like what's gonna happen and nobody has crystal ball. We don't know if someone's gonna want to build something or not, but, but the so-called entitlement or opportunity is there. So when a prospective buyer or someone who owns it already goes to buy it, they go, well, what, you know, they're asking this much for it and what can I build? There's got to be some way of knowing what that number is generally. And that's what we do with the zoning. We figure that out. We kind of back into that number based on parking, based on, you know, code parameters, setbacks.
But there's flexibility here, right?
Of course.
Because of, and I think the line of questioning really just come, of, of that number of one sixty really just stems from the concerns that we've heard over and over about density in Hampton Bays in particular. We would just want to make sure that when we move forward, we're, we're able to sort of incorporate what we're getting in terms of feedback. That way, we, we can build a consensus that works for the entire community. And I guess that, that leads me to, you know, this, this, Janice, this will be a process, right? This, this is sort of like the part two of the first step, the first step, part two of gaining community input, right? Have you scheduled the, these meetings now with the Civic and the CC? Are they, are they officially?
Yes.
Great.
They're on their agendas. For the twenty-ninth is the Civic and the eighteenth is the CAC by Zoom.
Excellent.
So they will be there to get some input. And then the question is, what else do you want them to do? You know, that, then their part in this will have been somewhat completed. They did their fly-through, they did, they'll do the public stakeholder. And then we'll just have to figure out, like you said, maybe we'll look back at the pattern book. We'll look back at, you know, we just need a roadmap forward if you want to go forward.
I just had.
Well, after the community engagement, then we should have public hearings here and in, at the senior center in Hampton Bays, in the community.
I just have one other legal question on it, whereas the, the downtown overlay district that was annulled had a much bigger area.
Yes.
And part of the, part of the pushback on that was it didn't take into consideration the entire downtown area. And now we've made that area even smaller, can we legally do that?
As long as you plug it back into the corridor study, you know, you can look at any area that you want. It just comes down to the technical side of saying, okay, if we have this density here and then we put this density there, we don't want to just look at, and, you know, you want to.
Well, that's my whole thing, because we're saying, you know, this much density in this one small area, and then we don't take into consideration what's possible, you know, even though that, the rest of that area is pretty much built, but there's nothing saying it couldn't change hands or become something different or?
Well, I think that's important because the, the other side of this whole coin is the sewer district, right? And what would need to happen there, and they're going to come in. So you've also have KEDAC engineering with, partnered with H two M R Water District Engineers who have been looking at the sewer district boundary. And then what's the right size for that? And that will inform your density overall. And that's the hard look at like, well, if we're planning for this, you know, how much are you allocating? Whatever you need and for the future. So it's a balancing act. It's, it's not like we're saying that they should, you know, run out and do, you know, we had done a theoretical development program of two fifty over ten years, and that was something to figure out, something to assess the SEACR for, which did not work out. Now this is about a hundred, you know, ninety, less than that in this area. So either you're gonna say, well, no, let's, you know, pick a number, is it appropriate here? Because we also want to account for what if somebody across the street does come in and the fire district sells those properties and something changes? Should we allocate, you know, how much everyone gets so that you know, you know, and then that's a way to regulate density. You can do, you can do it a number of ways.
Did the engineers indicate when they would have some proposal for us, you know, something for us to consider, the options for the size and location of the sewer?
Yes. And I will put them on your calendar for the work session, probably the end of January or the first one of February.
Oh, good.
So that way you can ask them.
So as of right in the current zoning today, it could be a big box store that goes in?
I mean, VB, we really don't want big box stores.
I know we don't want it, but I'm just saying, it's a chance somebody could do it.
There are ways, regulations, like aggregating things. And of course, a supermarket is allowed, it's forty thousand square feet. So that is what we mean when we say big box.
Uh-huh.
You know, our goal has always been to keep VB smaller.
Yeah.
But there are always a lot of those parameters that we hope that people did not try to use.
Yeah. But you run the risk that somebody would if we don't make a change?
I think we've been at this for a long time and there's a lot of people who just are saying, you know, if you don't do anything, you're not gonna get anywhere. So like, there just has to be some decisions by you all as to what do you want to do and how do you want to do it? And, and I want what you want. So whatever you tell me you want to do is we will pull the switches and levers to go in that direction.
I agree. You can't just stand still because then, you know, you don't just stay the same, it stagnates. And I think people do want something, you know, different, a little bit different, brighten things up. But it's just the balancing of the density.
Yes, and that's important to the constituents here in Hampton Bays. We, we get that, we understand that. The other thing is just that if you have this opportunity, you know, and you lose the opportunity, you, you, you know, you won't gain another opportunity until those buildings deteriorate in eighty, a hundred years, you know? So it's really not always conducive to wait too long. And we've been, I mean, I've been here twenty years, we've been talking about this. We've been waiting. And then just this starting in two thousand and seventeen, it's been a long time, so there's that.
Would we be required to do any traffic mitigation? I know with the, the recent plan, we were considering opening up Good Ground Road, or, or actually, I shouldn't say opening up, but taking steps to create a right-of-way from Good Ground Road to the intersection where the, where the former diner was. We wanted to have that, we were planning on having that right-of-way there and not paving it, but for future possible traffic mitigation. Do we need to do something with traffic if we were to go forward with this?
Well, first I would say to land on a number and then we would know what we need to do.
Okay.
It's, it's sort of, people want us to be very scientific, but there's also an art to it. It's just life and it's very hard to be totally scientific about just how people want to live their lives and people just need apartments and to have some place to live. And by people, I mean graduates of Hampton Bays, children from this community who don't have anywhere to go, and maybe some seniors, that would be nice. And people who live here who don't want to maybe maintain a whole house anymore and want to live downtown, so.
When we had one of our.
We're aiming for, who we're trying to do this for.
Right. And when we had one of our public hearings in Hampton Bays in two thousand and eighteen, we had a significant segment of the population come out and ask us to do this, or like this, or, you know, provide more mixed-use apartments, you know, young people who want to live above a whatever and be in a downtown area.
Could we preliminarily put together some sort of assessment of traffic patterns? Maybe, I don't know, Tom Houghton or somebody in engineering or can look at where the traffic flow tends to go?
Sure, we have lots of traffic.
Yeah, and, and maybe can just put something preliminarily together just to provide some idea to the public that this could be the impact, this could be what we anticipate, just, you know, as something, as a, as a rough idea, so people understand what, what could be the impacts. And it also gives us some understanding too as a town board.
Hundred percent. The, the thing is that the impacts aren't all on day one.
Sure.
You know, so people build things. It goes, it's over time. It seems to get lost in the conversation. Everybody just jumps to, you know, in the last case, this is two hundred and fifty units, it's sudden death, forget it. So it's just over time, people's investment, their timing, not everyone's gonna, you know, necessarily build. And even, you know, the larger property owner here didn't want to. And even, um, you know, the larger property owner here didn't wanna, he never set out to build one sixty. This is for others to, to avail themselves with as well. So we, we would have to look at all of the impacts of your action if that is what you wanna do.
Okay.
And as far as traffic goes, people are in, in Hampton Bays area, because of the morning traffic and how snarled it gets in the neighborhoods, something like this would not necessarily draw morning, more morning traffic to Hampton Bays.
Well, the idea is, you know, if somebody lived there and then worked there, they wouldn't be using their car at all.
Right.
Um, that would be ideal, that's not necessarily, we can't mandate that if you live there, you have to work there. I mean, we don't know whether people work.
I just think given the current, you know, uh, traffic conditions that we're facing, I think it's important that we at least do some sort of preliminary assessment of whatever data we have.
Plenty of data to look at and can provide that to you.
Fair enough.
And, um, and I agree, we don't wanna create, exacerbate the traffic. Um, but also, you don't wanna plan for only single-car occupancy. I have a great graphic I'll share with you all on email, but it shows like a hundred and seventy-seven people in their cars and it's a traffic jam. And then those same people just sitting on a roadway and you see how spaced out they actually are and then they chose them, you know, on a bicycle and then it shows them on like a bus or a truck. And it's like, you know, so when you start to think about alternative transportation, walking, biking, um, trolleys, other ideas.
Theoretically, yeah, theoretically, a teacher who works in Southampton could live in this area, walk over to the train and take the train and the commuter connection and hopper to their job.
Exactly.
Extra question, not to change the subject, but do you think a car, carpool parking lot would help with the traffic? So if you had it somewhere west of the canal?
Yes, I do, and in fact, long, long ago, at the site of the best.
Yes, that's why I bring it up, yes.
Proposal, that same property owner wanted to do that. He wanted to create like, sort of a place where everybody stages their trucks and leaves them there and, cause it was on the other side of the canal, on the east side.
So you think that could be feasible?
I mean, I always thought that was a great idea, but it just was almost ahead of its time. That was, that was a long time ago, but there was no.
Maybe we could re, maybe we could review that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if the people would want that instead.
What did you say about the overlay, the pro, the scope of the prior one and now it's smaller?
Well, the prior one was it went, it went further to the east, it went further to the west and it had the entire south side of the street to the railroad station included. So it was a big and there was like an A area and a B, like it was, it was more.
Yeah. There you go.
It was that whole area and now we're just, we've condensed it to that.
Just the town.
And why, why did it get condensed?
Because the stuff on the south is really, it's done, it's, it's built out, it's. The fire department just bought the last kinda piece.
Used to be a gas station there years ago, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, the thinking was it because it was largely built out and that wasn't really the focus. So the town board, you know, started over again, I thought.
We kind of wanted to focus on, on getting those shops along the park and having access and.
Cause I walked there like a long time ago when I first moved to Hampton Bays, we, some trails back there, you could cut it out on. Lot of wet back there from, like, just past it where Bubbs is.
Yeah, wet, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Wetlands, that's recharge basin?
Yeah.
So there is that.
And it goes all the way to the west too.
I'm looking at, yeah, I'm looking at our GIS, there's no New York State wetlands there.
I think it's, you know.
But the recharge basin is some of all the roads.
A lot of places, a lot of places that used to be swampy have dried up.
Yeah. It was very swampy back there.
And but this stays off, this plan that they came up with sort of stays off that fire district piece and away from that some. So it's set off of that.
But it's not unusual to, you know, take just one little section to do that?
We, you can plan in increments, there's no, nothing stopping anyone. Yes, the, the criticism is that they don't want segmentation and you look at this like an incremental pieces and you're not considering the whole. So every time you look at a little piece, you still have to plug it back into the hole and we get that, we understand that. We have no problem doing that, um, but that doesn't mean you can't focus on some piece of the hole. And in fact, SECRE actually allows for actual segmentation at certain points as long as you articulate why you're doing it that way. So there are case law and there's a lot in SECRE that actually understands that you can't always have perfect knowledge of an entire geographic area, but, and you, because you wanna do one thing, you can't do that. You know, you, you can, it's just a matter of plugging it back into the hole and then as the hole progresses, making sure that you're taking into consideration all the potential impacts and mitigating for that.
And it's most substantiated here because with the form-based codes, it, they are built and need to be done on property that is less developed. I mean, ideally, it's not developed at all, but since that's the area, it's, it's easier to substantiate why you would focus there for that.
Right, and here you have millions of dollars of investment. You bought the thirty-eight acre park, put in millions to build the park. Now we wanna be able to protect that access to the park and allow for that to be pulled into the community, to Main Street, and that was always the goal here.
Mm-hmm.
And incentivize really more investment in Hampton Bays. Cause that's what we're talking about, private investment.
That is, you know, truly revitalization, that is what we do, yeah. I, I mean, I'm just hoping that people understand when they're looking at this, that I know people wanna get down to like, okay, well, we need a brewery here and we need an ice cream shop here and we need a bookstore there. And I just hope they understand that that's not us, that's free market. That's whatever people feel like they can make money doing in these buildings is what they'll become. But I think we, we're trying to do is lay out the framework for making it conducive for those bu, for those businesses to even function and be profitable because they'll have, you know, the retail and they'll have the, the, the residential component. And it, we're just trying to set it up for those things. I mean, I bet people say, well, we, we should have a daycare because then when parents come to pick up the kids and the kids can use the park and then they pick up the kids, I mean, it's a great idea and it's a great, like, you know, and then the parents would shop in the stores. But that's not us. And, and I, I just want people to understand, like, that's not us. We're trying to put the framework in place to make things like that, what the community wants conducive to happening, but we can't, at the end of the day, say, you know, this has to be a brewery and this has to be a restaurant and this has to be an ice cream shop.
That's right, that's, that's a hundred percent what it is, is like, the, if you set it up to be of, a form and that's what historical concepts is all about, like, that's historic, that's sort of good planning, then the bones are there and set and then you build the, the body and then what goes in it later. But if you don't set it up that way, eventually it'll get cleared away and somebody new will say, hey, let's do it this way, you know?
So the fr, the fr, the framework is really there to hopefully attract the type of businesses that the community will want. Obviously, it's no guarantee, but that's why we need to work with, you know, historical concepts to, to just look at that, that, um, design book, for instance, to really try to match what we'd like, you know, to align with the community's interests.
Absolutely. And that is true, we can't dictate that somebody be one thing or another. That's why our table of uses are so varied in different areas, you can have different uses and they can choose because you just, life changes, it's, again, it's a lot more of an art than a science.
And this is the United States and we believe in free markets.
Yes, and property rights, by the way.
Within zone, right.
So.
Elizabeth and Paul, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
You guys really hit it right there, in the last couple minutes of conversation. Um, that's that, you know, really trying to find what the community wants, put that framework in place to make sure that the sort of development they want is possible and easily achievable and really to give the property owners, you know, a little bit more predictability in the process that they know if they come in with an application to you all that is consistent with the decision and the framework, that it will be an easier approval process. They have a little bit more certainty, um, in the steps they need to take. And hopefully that that will really help to enable and encourage this sort of development.
Right, it's hard when everyone goes, but we don't want this, um, but it's allowed in that table of uses. It becomes a, an argument and a lot of upset and it's easier to just sort of even look at those uses and say, well, if you don't want these things, then why are we allowing them here, you know? And unfortunately, in this case, one of the things that people don't want is apartments, but that where else are you going to put them? You, you know, that's the question, that's the million-dollar question.
I think they get worried when you say apartments.
Right, uh, uh, apartments over stores and some townhouses are in this plan, yeah. So if you don't want that or no one wants that, I just, you know, as a planner, I think you need that. Uh, how are you gonna have a trust downtown?
And the community is asking for that. I mean, I know some members of the community are not, but, I mean, a vibrant, mixed-use downtown area is good for businesses, it's good for the community, um, and plenty of people have told me that they were interested in that and young people too.
Even the people that were against the original plan because of residences were basically saying, we don't mind having apartments over stores or apartments over retail, we just don't want four-story apartment buildings.
Right.
Which there's none of that in this plan.
No.
Yeah, that seems like a compromise that people might wanna get behind. Unless we were, I mean, did anybody look at whether keeping it at the hundred and eight that it is now in the VB zone would be workable or does it, you really have to have the.
Yes, the people that are here said they can't build it at that.
But you, you could do a hundred and eight, but you could have three-bedroom units and then you have kids.
Yeah.
Right, which, you know, that's the other thing. Which is if you do a hundred and sixty and they're smaller units, then you have one- and two-bedroom apartments.
Yeah, or units, units.
I, I like kids.
I do too, I'm just saying that in Hampton Bays, they have very high school taxes.
Yeah, I know.
And so they're worried about more kids in the district and they're, you know, and it's a concern, so.
We did do a financial analysis too of the revenue and that more than offset the school tax. And there was a, a healthy amount of tax revenue.
Well, and that's what people don't understand too, it's a hundred and sixty, it's not a hundred and sixty affordable units that will be paying taxes into the district, these are market-rate apartments, most of them. I'm sure some will have to be affordable based on our code, but most of them are market, market rents that will pay a market, they'll have to pay the taxes into the district.
That's right.
The businesses will have to pay the taxes into the district and the businesses won't have any school kids.
So, so just to, so just to rephrase that, Cindy, are you, are you, that's a woman. Are you saying that that would be good for the, for, uh, the taxpayers, it'll off, offset some of the tax burden, for instance?
Having more retail that's vibrant and that's usable into, into, an influx into the tax base of having retail businesses, I think yes, would be a big plus for the taxpayers in Hampton Bays. I think it's a big piece they're missing is, is, is business revenue from, from.
Cause I often hear, we often hear from people who say that they're paying high tax, they feel like they're paying higher taxes in Hampton Bays, so.
Well, they, on their school, they are.
Cause they don't really have rateables that many, as many as others.
So this is a good.
And that hundred and sixty number is somewhat arbitrary, that's not a set number and one, like I said earlier.
No, and that's the idea, you can, you can determine that number.
We're not requiring it, it would be based on individual property owners and how many apartments they would want to build if we were to allow that in our code.
Right, we need to kinda come to a number. We're coming to a number so we can assess like how much sewer flow does that equate to? How much traffic does that equate to? We have to come to some kinda number so we know what we're talking about, otherwise we're just, but we don't know if that number will ever. Look, you could do a hundred and eight right now, there's none. Why? Nobody's doing it because it, it's not economically feasible. But you could've done a hundred and eight for twenty years now and no one has done them.
And you can, we can do it at height and how many stories.
Absolutely.
Which is really important.
Yes, and you'll see this there, design was keeping it low.
But what, how was it that, um, the, the other, the developer who submitted a prior plan had less units? Not a whole lot less, but it was like fifteen less? So he thought he could make it work with a hundred and forty-five.
Well, that was just on his, this is a hundred and sixty on everyone's. So he would get proportionally less.
All right, this was the whole thing, not just his.
Not just him, so he would not achieve the number he was necessarily looking for either. It would come down. And, but if it came down, then eventually someone will say, I can't make, I can't make it work, the numbers don't work. And, and it's not us being so sympathetic to developers, it's just an economic exercise or something.
It'll never get built.
You know, if you're planning for something, you wanna plan for something that could really happen, not just, you know, we're not just doing this for fun. It's not really fun.
Yeah, but are those for us or?
Uh, yes, although I realized, I think I should give you the whole thing instead of just these. So I'm gonna reprint the, the rest of it.
All right, well, thanks, this was a great overview for us.
Thanks for having me.
And also, one other thing, go back to the question I asked before.
Yes.
Do you have any paperwork or it's drawn on that, the parking lot?
On the parking lot.
Oh, and the best part, the former, we thought that's.
And then when you.
From back in the day? I don't, but I, I would be happy to, you know, it was really a, um, conceptual thing. You know, I don't think he ever actually submitted an application, but.
A lot of people have been talking about that concept, so it would be something.
That would be amazing, you know, it's sort of like what's old is new and that was an old idea from a long time ago and maybe his time has come.
Absolutely.
So that would be fantastic. But again, also there's concerns with the neighbors.
The neighbors on that, they would want that.
Caution, anything there, so. Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth and Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later.
All right, the next public, uh, the next discussion topic is the Community Housing Fund project plan and Kara Box here to talk to us about it, hi Kara.
Hey Kara.
I have some handouts.
I'll just get everything up in your new office.
Great.
Great.
Pass this out to everybody. Thank you.
How long have you been in there now?
Three months.
Oh, we've been there since, um, July.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, a little while.
Has all the space working?
Seven months.
It's working out great.
Thank you.
Do you see your glasses?
No, they were here.
I thought they were yours.
At least we need them, I guess.
It's too small for me.
What I'm asking out to you is just a, um, a copy of the draft, um, project plan as well as just really an, an overview of the programs that are listed in the plan, so. So the, um, the Community Housing Fund project plan is an addendum to the town's housing plan, which was adopted by the town board in twenty twenty-two. The addendum was prepared, um, in order to provide the public with some information about, uh, the programs that could be available with the CHF funding. The addendum was also prepared to give the, um, community, uh, Community Housing Fund Advisory Board some, um, guidance to make recommendations to you, the town board, um, for funding for eligible projects and programs. Um, Town Law Section sixty-four K, which created the Pecanic Bay Community Housing Fund, sets forth the purposes, uh, for which the fund can be used. Um, and there are six categories, um, or purposes. The first one is to provide financial assistance to first-time homebuyers. The second is to produce community housing for sale. Third is to produce community housing for rent, to rehabilitate existing buildings for community housing, to acquire existing housing units for community housing and counseling services. So under these five categories, the Housing Department created programs that can be funded with the CHF funding. You will find these programs listed in your addendum. They are, um, four programs for first-time homebuyers. There's a program to assist with the development of affordable housing. There are three programs for, to create affordable rental units. There's a program for the town's volunteer essential workers and there's a program to keep the town's workforce, seniors and disabled living within the town. So let's kind of talk about some of these programs and I have, I'm just gonna bullet point them for you. So in the housing plan, it's on page seven, begins the funding programs. So, under the heading Financial Assistance for First-Time Homebuyers, one of those categories, we have a Down Payment Assistance Program. So CHF will provide a three percent of the down payment. Typically, um, buyers need five percent down, they would have to provide the two percent. CHF could provide the three percent down payment. The loan is paid back to CHF when the home is sold or refinanced. The buyer doesn't make any monthly payments and pays zero percent interest on the loan. The next program is a Shared Equity Program. It would be available to low, moderate-income homebuyers, um, that's up to eighty percent of the area median income. The, uh, CHF pays a percentage of the cost of the home. CHF would then share in the appreciation of the home, uh, when it's, uh, sold or refinanced. The next program is a remodel program. This program will allow first-time homebuyers to rehabilitate housing, um, to, to make it livable. Would include like zombie homes and, um, uh, foreclosed homes. Um, and just would allow them to make repairs to dilapidated homes to make them livable. It's really a win-win for a first-time homebuyer and for, um, the neighboring, uh, community.
Does, does, sorry, does that include seventy-two H in this too?
It could include seventy-two H for sure, yep. Next program is an employer-assisted down payment program. This program would work in conjunction with an employer who already offers a, um, down payment assistance program to first-time homebuyer employees. Um, it inclu, it could include a match program, interest rate buydown, uh, deferred repayment of loans. Okay, the next category, we're gonna move to our programs that produce community housing for sale. And we've developed a pro, an affordable easement program. Um, this program is for developers who wanna build new affordable housing. CHF would be able to purchase an affordable easement that would restrict the development on the property to affordable housing. Um, the funds could be used to purchase land or for construction costs. The amount of the, um, grant would be based upon the developer's proposal and the scope and need for each of the projects. The next program is a program that would produce community housing for rent. And we have, uh, under that, we have the, uh, accessory apartment program. This program provides a homeowner with a no-interest twenty-year loan to create an accessory apartment on their property. The tenant must work thirty hours a week within the town and must income-qualify. The property owner must charge an affordable rent that is in compliance with the town's affordable rent guidelines. And there is no income limitation on the homeowner. The next program would be a motel conversion program. This would provide.
Is that under a state code that we're adopting when they say there's no income limitation for the homeowner?
So there is a, a program that New York State has, which is called the Plus One ADU Program. And under that program, the state restricts the income to, of the homeowner to a hundred percent of the area median income. So our program would differ from the state's program in that our program would not restrict the, um, the income of the homeowner. So anyone who wants to build an ADU on their property would be able to do so.
I have a question. It says both the homeowner and the tenant must occupy the apartment as their primary residence.
Either the apartment or the primary residence, so.
And as far as the, uh, the tenant that would go in there, they would have to meet the criteria that we set down, the affordability criteria.
That's correct. So the, the tenant would have to income-qualify. And we would check to make sure that, you know, the tenant is under the income limitations that the town requires. And then the tenant would also have to work within the town of Southampton at least thirty hours a week.
Okay, so the board knows we were, that was our ta, our target, uh, demographic was people who, uh, qualified for affordable housing. Uh, not necessarily the owner, but the tenant, and we want them to be in the community working.
That's correct. We were saying, you know, with the.
That's a policy decision on our part.
The previous town board had made a determination that anybody who wants to create an ADU on their property should be allowed to do that. Because they are providing a service to the town, you know, the tenant would be restricted in the income limitations and the rent that that homeowner could charge would also be restricted. So that was a, a policy's decision that the previous town board had made.
And the reason behind that policy was because we currently have an ADU law in place, but we were finding that people weren't building them because the cost of building them, you can't rent them for the affordable rates at the cost of construction now. So if we could offset the cost to build it, then it made sense for them at the affordable rate.
Did that program that was previously in place have an income limitation on the owner or it never did?
So, well, I think what Cindy's referring to is, is that just under our, um, accessory apartment law.
Yeah.
Uh, that would allow for the construction of these ADUs. We were finding that people just weren't building them because of the cost and because our, um, accessory apartment law restricted the, uh, rents to be affordable. So they, they were finding that they couldn't build it. The cost of building it, you know, didn't make sense for them when they could only charge an affordable rent. So we came up with, with this, uh, program, which is a companion to the state program. The state program, the state has given, awarded the town, um, two million dollars, um, to incentivize the creation of ADUs. Um, we have had such a.
One time?
It was a, right, it's a one-time. We're hoping that there'll be more rounds. Um, the town, uh, the state just did, um, uh, come out with a second round, but that's not being offered to townships that already have a program in place. It's being offered to towns that did not, um, do not have a program in place, so. But we're hoping that there'll be more money available, um, for that, so.
And a lot of people took advantage of that.
We had a tremendous response to that, so we have more applications than we do funding for that. So that was really the thought behind this program is to give some more money to create more of these units.
And we also had people that applied for that program, but they didn't make it in because they just made a little too much money to, to qualify.
Exactly right. There is a, 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 a case where there was a, a schoolteacher and her, uh, her husband who worked in the contracting industry and they were over the limitation. They have two young children and they were looking to have some, um, additional income to come in to offset daycare and things like that. But they did not meet the income limitation of the state's program, so they, they could not get the grant. So. Um, okay, so just moving on to other, uh, programs that are available under, um.
If I just might, the Zoom isn't, um, doesn't seem to be broadcasting. I just wanted to check in just.
We're not.
Oh, okay. Oh, it was, but we're not. Oh, got it, got it. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
So under community housing for rent, we have a motel conversion program. It provides a low-interest loan for the rehabilitation of old motels, uh, to be used for low, moderate income housing, uh, for the town's seasonal and year-round workforce. We also have a commercial property conversion program or it's called an adaptive reuse program. Provides financing, uh, for the conversion of commercial property into affordable rental housing. A developer can use this low-interest loan for site acquisition and construction costs. We also have a program for volunteer essential workers. Um, this would assist the town's low, moderate income volunteer essential workers with direct mortgage assistance, uh, payments, uh, in order to make a home affordable. Um, the volunteer must be critical to the town's public health and safety and who uses their personal time to, and expertise to support various essential services. The program is designed to assist with direct mortgage payments, uh, during the time that they volunteer. We also have a program for the town's workforce, seniors and disabled persons. Um, CHF funding, it can be given to, in exchange for an occupancy restriction for the workforce housing, seniors or disabled residents. It's an affordable easement program and there are two ways that this can assist in providing affordable housing. It could be a down payment assistance to purchase a home that will restrict the occupancy. Or it can be an annual cash payment to the owner of the property, which would be the difference between the market rate rent and what the affordable rent would be. So, um, so the, this, as I mentioned, this is an addendum to the housing plan, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. Under the, um, town law, the housing plan is required, um, to be updated at least every five years. So that was two thousand and twenty-two, so, um, by two thousand and twenty-seven, um, it would have to be updated. Um, this, um, addendum, you know, we can see if these programs are working or not working. We can amend it as, as needed if, um, you know, if they don't seem to be working or if they do seem to be working or need to be tweaked, we can do that. Um, so, you know, that's, that's really the purpose of, of this, uh, of this housing plan.
What about the, the preferences that we're setting out here? How are those, um, okay, they're okay to do in this context, but tell us why.
Sure. So the, the preference that we have would be that, um, or the requirement would be that somebody work within the township at least thirty hours a week. And, you know, we have to be careful when we set, um, preferences because we have to make sure that there's not a disparate impact upon a protected class. And that, um, that preference or, or restriction, um, does not have a disparate impact upon a protected class when we say that you have to have a, a job within the town. We're not making it, uh, a requirement. They could, uh, have, uh, an offer coming into it, say, you know, saying that they have an offer to work within the town. Um, they don't have to currently have a job, just that, uh, they will have to have a, an, an offer to work within the town, so. And I have run it by New York State to make sure that, um, you know, they were, um, agreeable with the fact that it didn't, uh, um, you know, violate, uh, fair housing and they were in agreement with that.
Did they by any chance give any kind of written opinion that you could put in your file?
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a written opinion, but, um, that's something I can request, yep.
In one of the, uh, in one of the, uh, portions of sixty-four K, they do mention local. You know, uh, individuals who are local for home buying, uh, portion. And their definition of local was someone who lived here within the past five years, someone who works here or someone who currently lives here.
That's right.
So there is that in, in the state law that we can build off of. I've always thought.
Yeah, that, that's in the state law for, um, the first-time homebuyer, uh, programs. Um, that they do require for, um, you know, re, right, people who work or live within the town and they define as living within the town, anybody who has lived in the town within the last three years. So they could have left, maybe they were forced to leave because they could no longer afford to live here. But if it, that's within that three-year period, they can come back.
But I don't know how that, I can understand what you're saying about working here but not living here, cause I thought that was the whole point of. You know, then you're, you're, you might be, you know, if it's like an all-white community and you're only letting people who live here avail themselves of the program, then that would have a disparate impact.
Yep, so what we're seeing is for the down payment assistance, you have to live or work here. So live or work, that, that terminology has not been, has been determined not to violate fair housing.
That way if they, if they work and live somewhere else, they can move here. Cut down on traffic.
Correct, yep. Okay. And I imagine that's why New York State put that into the, into the town law sixty-four K.
So Kara, th, this is obviously in draft form. Are there certain parts of this that you've just reviewed that you, you find that will be more viable for the town? At, for instance, down payment assistance may be easier to do based on agreements with banks and whatnot, funding, um, that we get. Have, have you sort of looked at that in terms of which aspect that you've laid out here will be the most viable for us moving forward?
Yeah, so what I'd like to start with is that ADU program. And one of the reasons why is because we know we've had a great success with the state program, the state plus-one ADU program. So, and we have, uh, under the state, uh, program, one of the grant requirements was that we work with a not-for-profit housing agency. And we, the town board selected, uh, the CDCLI as that not-for-profit housing agency. And so they have a program set in place already. Um, they qualify the, the people, they look at the, the, make sure that the property qualifies and they have contractors lined up and, and ready to go. So that would be the first program that I would recommend that this board kind of start with, kickoff. Um, because we can, uh, enter into a, uh, an agreement with CDCLI to kind of, yeah, you know, run this companion program for us and we could get that up and running right away, so.
What about down payment assistance? Because that, that, that seemed to be a very popular item, um, that I've heard from people. A lot of folks, you know, wanna be able to just have that, you know, comfortability, you know, to, to be able to put a down payment on a home and, and start their lives. Um, have you looked at that? Have you assessed that?
Sure, yeah, we can, that, that we can do, um, as well. Uh, it would be, you know, we would have to make a determination whether we're gonna do like a shared equity program or just a, 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 a first-time home, homebuyer down payment assistance program. We're gonna have an application up and running on our, uh, on the town's website in the, in the housing division. Um, and people can, will be able to submit their application. We'll be able to kind of vet through them and then, um, start that program as well.
And the down payment assistance is great, but it's if you can't find a home under a million dollars, you can't afford the mortgage, even if you can come up with a down payment. So it's kind of like, uh, that's why I think the, the ADU and the rental assistance is gonna actually come more into play through this because unless we are building units that are affordable, that down payment assistance really, it's not helping a lot of people make things affordable. Yes, it can get you in, but you, you've gotta.
It'll help some, but not others, right?
It's kind of like tangling a carrot or something that you can't get to.
So will the program assess income, I assume, to see if they, they are, because, you know, my, my knowledge of what, you know, you do with Habitat for Humanity, for instance, Habitat really assesses the, the, the family or the applicant um, to see whether or not they, they're able to make mortgage payments. Can something similar, that process, be applied to a down payment assistance to know, you know, you make over a certain amount? Will you be able to make mortgage payments based on the inventory that is available for down payment assistance?
So right now, the town has a contract with the Long Island Housing Partnership to do those kind of things for us. Um, we like to use a third-party agency to do all of those kind of things. So with any of the existing community benefit units that we have, when those go up for resale, we do have the, um, Long Island Housing Partnership. We send the applications there, they vet them, they make sure that the person can, um, qualify for a mortgage. They require them to go through mortgage counseling services, um, and then they let us know once they have a qualified, um, person. This, I imagine the down payment assistance program will work the same way. They'll let me know when they have a, a person that qualifies. They, they, they do the same thing with the state programs and county programs as well. That county program has a down payment assistance program and the Long Island Housing Partnership brings to them a qualified buyer who has selected a home and would, they know that we have the down payment.
Because, because that's, I think that's important because when we talk about, you know, opportunities for a variety of, 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 of the population here in Southampton, it's not just, you know, you know, working-class folks, it's also, you know, middle-class folks that are struggling, you know, they might, you know, make decent money, but they can't afford to live here. So there is that sort of middle ground. Uh, we wanna appeal to as many people as possible so that they can live here. We have a vibrant community.
Yep, yep. And I think some of the, you know, we need to have apartments that are affordable for the people who are starting out because, you know, if an apartment is affordable, now they'll be able to save the, the money that they need for a down payment. When an apartment's not affordable, they're not saving any money for a down payment to then purchase a home. So we need to kind of have the stepping stone too.
Yeah, yeah.
And the apartments is, is a crucial component, I believe, that has been lost in this community over the past twenty years. I can remember being a young person, you, you, you could rent winter rentals that were pretty, pretty attainable and then do whatever you were gonna do for the summertime. So, uh, the accessory apartment, I, I believe, is certainly gonna be one of our first, uh, initiatives here. And, uh, that's gonna require some code work on our part. And we're gonna be introducing some code in the springtime, you know, so the board will be looking at that as well.
No, I was just gonna say that I, it really is too. I mean, a big part of this too is, you know, I like to see that there is, you know, counseling available and, and, and because, I mean, my first mortgage was a Sony Mae mortgage. I had to go through a whole budgeting course and, you know, and they really put you through the test of, you know, can you manage this? Because a lot of people, they, oh, yeah, yeah, I can make that payment, but you don't put all the other, you know, like the taxes and the insurance and everything else into play and then it becomes like, oh my, it's like sticker shock on a new car, right? It's like, oh, I can pay, oh, yeah, the tax.
Like that, no income variation loans.
Yeah, so it's good. And then also just having that as a, available to people that are maybe struggling to stay in their homes. Like they have the home, if we can just give them that little bit of help to stay in that home. That we have to find housing for.
Yeah, so, um, part of what the Long Island Housing Partnership does, and, and I don't know if this was, you know, what, what you went through, um, Cindy, when you got just the Sony Mae mortgage, is I think it's a Saturday that the people have come in and they have to sit down in a class and they, they really learn from different professionals, um, you know, about the mortgage process. And they also bring in, you know, somebody from the insurance industry, talk about homeowners' insurance. They bring in a lawyer, I think, who, who talks about the legal process and all these individuals come in. And all these individuals come in and they, 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 they get the counseling and they, they know, you know, what the process is in buying a home, so.
I mean, I remember Diana Weir came to RCAC one time, we were talking about housing opportunities and she was saying, oh, it would be great and a lot of people didn't know it was even available, that you could have like your, you know, your kid who's getting out of college, sit down and go through this process where they tell you basically, okay, so you wanna own a home. These are the steps that you should start taking now to build your credit, to do, you know, to start budgeting and doing all these things. And it, it kind of puts everybody on that path to doing the right things to get to that point.
And I think that it should be noted that our, um, first-time homebuyer, uh, down payment assistance can be, you know, built upon with some of these other, um, down payment assistance that's available. New York State has down payment assistance and the county has down payment assistance. So, all of those combined together, this is just an additional now source of.
Public combination.
A combination of all the funds together will help somebody buy a home.
And getting somebody to know that that's all available, cause there's a lot of people that don't know that any of this is available.
Exactly right. And, and that's one of the great things about our agreement with the Long Island Housing Partnership is they do educate people about, okay, yeah, you're, you're going to be applying for, um, you know, the town of Southampton CHF, down payment assistance, well, you'll also have these other things available to you as well.
But what about housing and community services as a, as a department of the town? Are, 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 is your department going to be doing outreach, um, to the community to, because I think Councilman McAmmerich's point is a very good one. You know, something that I observed in, in county government sometimes is, you know, for instance, with, uh, you know, septic improvement grants. So, sometimes people didn't really, uh, they weren't aware, they weren't, you know, well, here's a website, you know. And is there adequate resources to do outreach, to make sure we're reaching folks who are going to be able to, you know, apply for these programs and, and, and benefit from them?
Sure, yeah, in addition to the website, you know, we'll put all of these programs with, you know, a little, um, you know, little information on each of the programs that, that people know what's there and what can, they can apply for. But, yeah, I mean, I can, I do lots of outreach to different community groups and let them know about these programs and that they're available. Um, you know, we can, we can definitely explore that as we get these things up and running, what would be the best way to reach people?
And Kara, we may need individuals in your department. Uh, Community Housing Fund does allow us to use that money for exactly what you're saying, for, for, you know, advising and administration as well.
I'd love to talk about that, you know, contingent on this going.
Build that out a little bit.
Yeah. I also have one, one more question about C, uh, the remodeling, uh, program. You mentioned zombie homes and seventy-two H. You know, uh, can you tell me a little bit about what is currently in the inventory? Are, are we seeing more, because this is what I've been told, more of seventy-two H and zombie dwellings more on the west side of the canal? Is that true and, and, and what, what have you observed?
Yeah, well, historically, I think our seventy-two H homes have been west of the canal in the Riverside, Flanders area. But, you know, uh, working with code enforcement is really going to be key here because code enforcement will kind of alert my department to homes that are not in, you know, not in good shape um, and that might be available. And I can certainly work with the, um, lenders, the, the, the banks that have the, the liens on the properties, if it's a zombie home, you know, to, to kind of, um, uh, you know, reach the public and let them know that these things are available.
And these homes are, excuse me, Councilman, uh, these homes, they're required to register with the town.
Yes.
We, we, we do make them pay if, if there's, if they're not occupied because we want banks to move them in one way or another. So, we do have a database of those homes.
Yeah, code enforcement maintains that database. So, that's why it's key that my department work with them on, on this particular program.
And, and you're working well with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I've been in touch with Ryan Murphy and, yeah, he's, he's already provided me with, um, with a list.
My next question is with respect to seventy-two H. Are you, are, how do we receive information of those properties?
So, the county alerts us about the seventy-two H program, uh, about the program, about the properties. And, um, we have a, almost like a rate of first refusal, we're gonna take a look at them um, and let the county know that we have an interest in them.
Right.
And then, um, we then have the, the ability, when it's put up for auction, to meet the auction price, uh, to match it. Um, and we can so choose that. But there haven't been in the, in, in the last couple of years, there haven't really been any properties that, either the county hasn't come to us or, um, that have been.
They've been auctioning them off before they.
Well, that's what, yeah.
You know this.
Yeah, yeah, so I've obviously, you know, we worked together on this, uh, when I was in the county. But I just, I guess my question is, is, um, are you, uh, are you, are you seeing all these properties? Do you feel like they, there, there are, there is a need for, for better communication with the county on this to make sure that we're seeing those properties before they go off to auction?
Yes, absolutely, and to give us time to do our assessment on them, to see if they are something that can be developed.
And what we're finding is that the county, what they do give to us or give us the opportunity to bid on are properties that are challenged.
Right, exactly.
Unbuildable, just, you know, odd pieces that somebody just stopped paying their taxes.
What I mean, in the last, you know, year or so, there haven't really been any properties that, um, would be suitable.
Right.
But you know, there were other properties that we weren't informed of?
There could be, possibly, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like that program needs to be sort of just redrawn a little bit on the county side of things and it may require some collaboration with the legislator and, and possibly our county executive.
Well, you know, I think this is a really great program and thank you for all the work you've put into it.
Yeah, thank you Kara.
Don't take any comments as a, but I am still processing one thing that I wanted to ask you. And it's with the, you know, the, the, uh, what are you calling them, the apartments. If we, yeah, if we allow that, um, how are we, what is the possible impact on communities that are already so dense? I mean, what, you know, how, how can we do something to make sure that certain communities aren't overly burdened with more housing, especially since we don't, you know, we don't have an updated comprehensive plan that says, this is what, this is looking at the whole town and this is where we think the housing should go. And now it seems as though this step might add a lot of density to certain places and without us having any control over it.
Sure, so, right now, our zoning code regulates the accessory apartments. So, under our zoning code, you need to have a lot size of thirty-seven thousand square feet to be eligible to put an ADU on your property. So, that's three-quarters of an acre. Um, it, unless you are located, your hamlet is located or your area is located within a, uh, an area where there are less than five hundred people per square mile. And if there are less than five hundred people per square mile, you can go down to a lot size of twenty thousand square feet or half an acre. And that's really how the density is controlled, um, by that.
So, our current, our current zoning of ADUs was, was put in place and it was done in a way that it wouldn't overburden areas like Hampton Bays. So, where we're at right now, in, in my opinion, is we haven't put money into allowing people to build ADUs. And I feel like once we do that and we see what the, what the, you know, obviously, we want them east of the canal, a lot of them. And that's where it's incentivized to be and that's how the code was kind of written to kind of put them in those areas. So, in my opinion is until we see that, you know, there's this great need for more that's not being met, I see, we say, we, you know, we should almost see how the current zoning, which was put in place to, to account for that density issue. How many units can we put in, in those areas before we open it up to say, you know, Hampton Bays can have them? I mean, if you put down that lot size to less than three-quarters of an acre, you're talking about, you know, all these neighborhoods in Hampton Bays potentially having an ADU.
That's what I'm talking about.
And they don't want it. And so, I feel like the current ADU zoning that was put in place was done with good thought and good purpose. And I think that now, it hadn't been utilized because people weren't building them, because they weren't, and this was my, what I was getting feedback from people, and they weren't building them because they were saying, I'm not gonna spend X amount of money in construction costs and then have you tell me what I can charge rent for because I can't even make the mortgage payment on building that unit. Whereas now, if we're providing an incentive to build those units, let's see how many we get in the area where we said, this is where it's appropriate, before we open it up to some of those. That's just, that's my feeling.
So, this is gonna have to be addressed by some code amendment, right? So, either we keep the code the same or we, or we introduce some changes. One of the problematic aspects of, of what you're saying, and I, I agree with the density component, that's why I voted yes on that legislation years ago. Uh, if we're offering money for ADU, a no-interest loan, we would effectively be offering it to certain portions of the town and not others. And that, to me, is, is, is a, is a problem, you know, and I think we need to address that in some way.
Unless we're limiting it to lot size, does that take it out of that?
Yeah, so currently, that is the way that the, the zoning code reads. So, you need that, currently, you need that thirty thousand square foot lot size. Which, kind, you know, really comes down to the fact that some areas like Hampton Bays and Flanders, those communities, the majority of those properties do not meet that lot size. With that being said, they are not completely prohibited, they just have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a variance in order to, to build an ADU on that.
Or have illegal apartments. And one of the things we've seen in Hampton Bays is that their population has increased by twelve hundred people and, you know, from census to census. So, people are moving into the area and it's just a question of where. You know, we were just talking about the downtown, you know, um, area and, and where people move. So, you know, they are doing it, I believe that there are illegal apartments, you know, that was stated at this board. And, and then, or, you know, apartments that are getting variances for a variety of reasons. So, I, I'd like to, you know, have the board discuss some of the code, you know, that we have and, um, you know, move forward with that.
Wait, so what would the new code say? I mean, what, what are you thinking about in terms of changing the code away from the thirty thousand three-quarter of an acre minimum? Or in, maybe larger?
That's one possibility as well. I know there's a concern about, uh, folks in the school district, you know, and, and so, um, it's just kind of a work in progress, it's not kind of ready for prime time yet, supervisor, so.
Would you, did you want to come up and just say something?
Excuse me, uh, thank you, uh, for letting me just chime in, but I would also just add that you could, hi Kara, you could phase or restrict a certain number of building permits annually. So, you can say, we're only giving out a hundred ADU permits per year.
In certain areas.
In certain, you know, or something like that, you can put that in the code so that it's like a natural, like.
That way you can watch the school district.
Stopgap measure and you can watch it. So, it's not just like a free-for-all, it's only so many building permits will be issued for these ADUs per annum.
Is that in conflict with, um, housing law?
No. Uh, town of Islip does that.
Okay.
I think East Hampton does it as well, they restrict the number of, um, ADUs per school district, as Bill said.
Okay.
I mean, we also have, I mean, if you're putting ADUs on these little lots in Hampton Bays without making them upgrade their septic or, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's, you know, and without having searing, it's an issue. I mean, they're small lots, they're tight and it's not, you know.
You could also, it shouldn't, doesn't always just have to be thirty thousand or not thirty thousand, it could be other parameters, like, and you can look at that.
Zoning categories.
Um, you know, you have to be in at least, you know, R forty zone, not R twenty, R ten, those are the little teeny lots. You know, you would say, you know, it's not permitted in an R twenty zone, even if you have an oversized lot.
I just remember back, I wasn't on the board at the time, obviously, but I remember the, the discussions that went into putting that ADU zoning in place. And there was a lot of dialogue about, you know, not having it in areas west of the canal and really trying to get people because frankly, you put more people west of the canal, you're gonna, your traffic issues, it's not just schools. It's your traffic issues, all those people have to get to work. I mean, yes, some of them will be going west to work, but for me, the issue has always been getting people out this way and getting them to stay out here so that, you know, we don't have these big traffic impacts. And if you're, you're putting everybody in Hampton Bays, you gotta get them all out of Hampton Bays, so.
Yeah, they, and nobody wants to put everyone in Hampton Bays.
I don't think that.
No, I understand. Many people come to the ZBA, they're the ones that need it the most. They're the ones that have the elderly parents, the brother, the cousin, whoever, that needs this unit.
But I feel like there's a, there's a, there's a process for them, they can go to the ZBA.
Sure.
And they can make that case and in most cases, I'm sure they get that relief.
Right.
But it shouldn't be, uh, it shouldn't be a given, like, here you go.
No, I, I couldn't agree more. Like, we should put it where you need it and, uh, but, oh, knowing that some of the folks that are asking for that relief are in Hampton Bays and we can't do anything about that. They come because they need it and they're asking for help, so, um, there's that.
What you're saying, Cindy, is the public does have the ability at the public hearing for the, for the ZBA variance to, you know, give their opinion during that process. It's, wouldn't be an as-of right, so the public would have that.
But I would restrict it in the lowers or the R ten, the R fifteen, the R twenty zones, just take it off the table.
But like, you know, one of the little lots to have them. This is definitely a conversation for another day.
Yeah, we're discussing code and I was, we could have had a different presentation with this. And, you know, there's a lot to say about that and I do believe in our, our assistance program, our plus-one assistance program. And I'd just like to, to say that an accessory dwelling unit is not necessarily always an addition to a property. Sometimes it's incorporated within the home itself, the living spaces in the home.
You need these back?
No, so I think what, what, um.
Well, it's just you were saying, this was, sounded like people were saying, this is the program of all the ones that we wanted to get going first.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
But if we're gonna change the, talk about changing the code.
But can this match the existing code?
Yes, so, so I think I was, that's exactly what I was just gonna say, Councilman Islily, is that, when you're asking me what program can we get up and running right away? I think we can still get this ADU program up and running right away, but it would follow the rules of the, the code that is currently in place, which is you need a lot size of thirty thousand square feet, unless you're within an area that has less than five hundred people per square mile, then you can go down to the twenty thousand square feet. So, that's the way that the.
Or you're able to get a variance.
Or you're able to get a variance, right, so that's the way that the program would currently work. Now, I know with the, um, plus-one, the New York State plus-one ADU program, the way that, uh, CDCLI is prioritizing the program is those people who do not need a variance are getting the funding first because it's they can, they can kind of, you know, work with them quickly and, and, and get that up and running. So, but the, the other people who have submitted their applications, that, it doesn't mean that they can't get funding, they're just working on the ones that don't need fund, that don't need a variance first.
My last question, um, what is the timeline on down payment assistance? What are, what are we, what are we seeing in the future for that?
How quickly we could get it running?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're almost ready to go. We have an application, we're working on, online application, that will be ready to go. Right now, currently, the CHF fund has about five point eight million dollars and that's through the end of November, that has been calculated. So, um, you know, if this board does decide to go through with the acquisition of the property that I presented, um, at the public hearing on Tuesday, we still have some funding left to put towards an ADU program and to put towards, um, the, um, you know, to the down payment program. Now, with that being said, this board still does have an opportunity if they so choose to bond, so.
How do you monitor the tenant's situation? I mean, what if somebody rents to somebody with the, the income limit, but then in, you know, a year, that tenant leaves and then they rent out to get a market rate?
Yeah, so every year, my office monitors by sending out an affidavit. And we require the, um, the tenant to provide us with a signed affidavit under penalty of perjury of law that the unit is their primary residence, um, and their, their income, you know, hasn't changed beyond the, the limitation. If their income changes, we do allow a, a, a year time for them to continue to live in the unit and then they would have to leave the unit so that the unit would be affordable for somebody else.
And is the affidavit considered a government document? In other words, it, it holds a lot of weight.
Yes, yeah, they have to sign it, it has to be, it's a notarized documentation, you know, document. Um, if we have not gotten those affidavits back, we do send code enforcement, um, to the, to the property to knock on the door and hand them the affidavit for signature.
Cause it could be a new tenant in there that didn't. Because it could be a new tenant in there that didn't.
Yeah, now, if it's, yeah, if it's a new tenant, they are required to register with code enforcement, that, they are required to register that new tenant with code enforcement, which would then trigger the fact that they have to submit the documentation to me, which would be the new lease agreement and the tenant's, you know, the tenant's income, proof of income. So that kind of would trigger it if, once, you know, the lease term ends or the tenant leaves, they have to fill out a new rental permit with the code enforcement.
And what about the, the, you know, one category of tenant, I thought you said was like an elderly family member, they're not going to, you know, are we providing money for someone to re- have their home to create this unit, but it's not addressing, you know, a, an affordable need?
So, under our current accessory apartment law, if it is an immediate family member, they are exempt from the income requirements, but it still is required to be their primary residence. So we have had quite a number of people that have applied for the plus one ADU program for their disabled children, they need an ADU or a separate place for their disabled children to live, or their elderly parents. And now, those people would be exempt from the income requirements.
There's a, there's a, there's a very, very high need for especially autistic children because there are no more, it's very hard to get into housing. And there's just nowhere and, you know, the parents want them to have some sort of, you know, independence and this program allows them to do that and they're still on property and they're still able to provide their services, but they still have their own, their own space, which is great.
Exactly, yeah, we've had several applications for, for just that scenario.
And over time, the CHF monies will be returning, even though it's not, it's a non-interest loan and we're kind of losing value on it, but we are getting these apartments for the community for the reasons that, that have been stated here. But it will be a funding stream of sorts if, for the Community Housing Fund that can be rolled over into other initiatives.
Correct.
Oh, this isn't due on sale, this is due after a year two, you start making the payments back?
They start making the payments, yeah. So the way it would work with, if we work with the CDC LI, they would collect the rent payments and put them back into the fund for additional ADU loans. So it would be replenishing that ADU program.
Just an aside, the, the monies that we have in the Community Housing Fund, that does gain interest, right?
Yes, of course.
Does the interest rate on it?
Yeah, well, it's variable, but we, we get a good interest rate with our bond rating, so.
Got it.
I think we're getting a 4.8 right now, near 5%.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now we have two.
So if the board, if, if, I mean, just while you're still here, we have a public, a hearing that we're going to have at our next meeting, I'd like to put on a resolution to adopt this and is that, what, what do you think of that? I, I don't want to keep the public hearing out longer than necessary.
Keep in mind, we're still waiting for Suffolk County.
Pending Suffolk County planning.
Yeah, so if Suffolk, if Suffolk County Planning Commission does respond to our submission, you know, then we would be ready to submit a, a resolution of adoption.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait for that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to, what?
Happy birthday, Jenna.
All right, a motion to go into executive session and then close.
Second.
Just say what we're going in for, for personnel.
Yeah, we have the list.
Right, of course. Where is it? Personnel and contracts. All right, so the motion as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.